Okay, the meeting will come to order. First item is finished, it's approved the agenda. I hear a motion to approve the agenda.
Take your motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, on my favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay, next is to approve the minutes of the September fifteenth regular school board meeting. Have a motion?
Make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, on my favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay, next is recognition, first is gift of knowledge, Masonic Dictionary Project, Miss Willis.
Mark Carter, school board member, members. I stand for you to not represent any of the six Masonic lodges of Lee County. Last year, Miles Lodge 165 started the gift of knowledge dictionary program. And with your all's okay and approval, we marched forward with that. And it was a great success, and we're very thankful for that. And we're thankful for the cards and letters that we've received from the teachers, the principals, and the school board members. But also, we're very thankful and was very moved from the letters that we've received from the students. Each lodge received letters and were read aloud in the lodge. And that's when it drove home that we've done something right. To hear this kid say how grateful they were, what they were going to be used for, and just to think that somebody was thinking of them. So we were very thankful for that, and it touched our hearts. Again, this year, the six Masonic lodges have come together and worked together to come up with funds to sponsor this once again. And we spoke with Mr. Carter. He said it's a great thing to do again this year, so we marched forward with that. And I stand tonight representing those six lodges of Lee County and presenting those dictionaries. Those months it will be distributed those in the coming weeks, and we're very thankful for him in doing that. The Masonic Lodge lodges are Miles Lodge 165, Dryden Lodge 326, Preston Lodge 47, McPherson Lodge 99, Wynn Lodge 221, and Martha Stacey Lodge 188. And it is the dictionary, the Webster dictionary for students that will be presented. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Does, uh, does he have any experience delivering books?
I believe he's done it last year. Done a good job.
About twelve, about twelve years.
Thank you.
Maybe next year before he gets through.
Adds three.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is the elementary best end presentations, Willis.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here. I might add live a little bit. I might go away from kind of what we had in the notes. Okay. Well, I can't see me. Then my back will be a little. Good afternoon, or good evening, I'm Lisa Willis, the principal of Elton Knob Elementary School. And when I did this presentation, I had Lindsay Gilbert with me, and she was the chairperson for our advanced ed committee at the school. So I introduced her and just explained that our school at that time currently served four hundred students in Head Start through fifth grade. Developing well-rounded children is a goal at Elton Knob. We value acceptance of individual differences and believe that physical and emotional safety is of the utmost importance. A state-of-the-art security system was installed two years ago to improve the safety of our Our school serves all of the elementary-aged ESL students in Lee County. We strive to meet the individual needs of all of our students. As you can see, Elton Knob student body comes in a variety of shapes and sizes. Of course, last year I said this is my third year, this year is my fourth year as the administrator at Elton Knob, and I'm proud of the progress that our students have made during my tenure, and our school is fully accredited. We view parents and grandparents as vital partners in the educational process. Last year, we reorganized a PTO for our school, and this group has sponsored a variety of fun and enriching activities for our students, as well as provided support for our teachers. In addition to academics, we strive to provide students with a variety of activities to enhance and enrich their school experience. We like to have fun while we learn and when we play. Community involvement and providing service to others is important at Elton Knob. We want our students to realize that helping others is vital to becoming a good citizen. Elton Knob Elementary is committed to excellence in academics, extracurricular activities, parent involvement, and community service. Our combined efforts enable us to strengthen our community one child at a time. And that was my presentation last year. I'd kind of like to update you, just, I was thinking driving down the road, because I just left from school just about today at Elton Knob. And we started out by giving benchmark test. We did some fifth grade math and fourth grade reading. I would like to say that the teachers feel like the tests are very valid. They reflect both the rigor and the format of the SOL. We're real excited about having a new program for benchmark testing. We also celebrated a baby in our Elton Knob family. Our fourth grade inclusion teacher had a baby this afternoon, a little boy, so we celebrated that with her. Then after school, we had a PD session for second through fifth grade reading teachers. Now, last year Dryden really showed us how to turn around a school. And I invited last year's third grade reading teacher at Dryden, who is now a reading specialist, Lena McCall, to come to Elton Knob and do an in-service that she actually did for our countywide in-service. But unfortunately, none of my teachers were able to go to that session, but I got it. And she talked about SOL tech, uh, test preparation, talked to my teachers about some really engaging activities to do in their learning stations. So we, we did that after school till about 5:15. And then this week, we're hosting a preseason booster basketball tournament at Elton Knob, which we've done for three years now, and we donate part of the proceeds to the cancer. It's, it's kind of a cancer awareness thing. So when I left Elton Knob at 6:30, my fifth grade girls' team was up by six points. So it's been an exciting day today at Elton Knob. I want to thank each one of you for your service as board members and for your support of the entire county schools and Elton Knob in particular. Thank you.
In case Ms. Willis leaves, you, you all are doing, you, you, okay, well, well, just in case, I'll go ahead and say it right now.
I already missed the rest of the fall days.
Well, but I thought, I thought maybe you all were doing the, the make teacher night tonight.
Oh, no, no, we haven't, we actually didn't have a.
So I was gonna ask for fries if you were, anyway. I, I would like to thank you and your staff for the hard work that you did last year on, on the process and everything, and I'm sure the hard work you're doing this year.
I believe Pennington Middle School is doing the make teacher.
Who else? Okay, thank you, Ms. Willis. Next is the, Mr. Carter with the schools with highest percentage of attendance.
Again, we have no change from last month. I, with the schools that have rated the highest percentage of attendance, first place again this month is Elydale Elementary School with ninety-four point eight percent. And that is actually a very great percentage rate for the first month, for the full month of school. Pennington Middle School came in second at ninety-three point nine percent. So we would like to congratulate them for keeping second place. So congratulations to both, uh, Elydale and Pennington Middle.
Okay, next is public expression. Anyone here for public expression? Okay, next is reports. Mr. Carter, is Veterans Day November eleventh, two thousand fifteen?
Of course, Veterans Day is on November the eleventh every year, but certainly a day that is intended to honor all of our military personnel who have served in the United States, uh, served the United States in all the wars, and particularly those veterans that are still living. And we will be asking our schools again this year to provide programs for the veterans and their communities. And every year, our schools do a wonderful job of honoring our veterans that live in their communities. So we're, we're looking forward to actually doing that again this year.
Okay, National School Lunch Week?
Well, National School Lunch Week was actually celebrated last week, October the twelfth through the sixteenth, and of course, that started back in nineteen sixty-two. But if you all would like to visit a school for lunch, you're certainly welcome to do so at, at any time. They would be certainly very glad to have you.
What about breakfast? Doesn't count, right? Because it's just.
It's actually National School Lunch Week, but I think they, they do have a breakfast week later on, but you're certainly welcome to attend either one of them.
You mean we have a rain check?
You have, you can have a rain check.
Okay, the security equipment grant awarded to Lee County Public Schools, Mr. Carter?
The Virginia Department of Education has awarded Lee County Schools a total of a hundred thousand dollars from the two thousand fifteen school security grant program that was authorized in the general assembly back in two thousand thirteen. And of course, we've applied every year, so we've been awarded every year. A hundred thousand dollars is the maximum amount that you can be awarded, and because of our composite index, there is no local match. And of course, a little later on, Ms. Lambert will address that in a, in a request for resolution.
Okay, the old Jasper School property, Mr. Carter?
Of course, you have some correspondence from the county administrator concerning the old Jasper School property. And actually, there was three tracts of land at the Jasper School property, and there's one tract, which is tract number one, has nine hundredths of an acre, that is the, or has been the polling site for the Jasper community up until just recently. And the board supervisors actually closed that polling site and wanted Stone Creek. And they're looking to try to sell that property, and because when they did some research, they actually lacked a deed, there was no actual transfer of it. So Mr. Poe was asking that we take action to try to get that property back to the county so they could sell it. I asked Mr. Hobbs to do some research on it. He did that, and of course, a little later on, the action agenda, I think he's gonna ask you to adopt the resolution to approve the sale of that property, the transfer of that property.
Okay, Office of Defense, Department of Health and Safety, Mike, is that it?
Good evening. This is the first of the five-year grant program that the Head Start program has. And we will have the first of three federal reviews this year. And the first one is the environmental health and safety, and it's scheduled for November the tenth and eleventh. We'll have one reviewer here for two days, be at the Head Start office for interviews on the first day, at the transportation department for interviews for the, and the inspection of three buses that the Head Start children ride on to and from. And then the next day, the center, centers and the facilities will be checked for mold, rust on metal, mulch, the equipment, fixtures in the room, gates, fences, playgrounds, and the cafeterias, ceiling tiles, and other environmental and safety concerns. So this is just to inform you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fundraising and field trip policy, L C one oh three, Ms. Doherty?
Hi, Ms. Doherty, this is unable to make it, she had, I think, maybe a last-minute necessity with, with family members. So actually, what we provided for you is recommendations for policy change. Uh, there's actually two sheets in your packet. The first one is the recommendations for changing the policy, and of course, the second one is the current policy with those recommendations included. So we're just at this time kind of presenting it to you for you to look at, think about, and ask questions. And next month, if you have questions, comments, or concerns, we'd be happy to try to answer those and put it back on the agenda for an action item.
I've got particularly two.
Okay.
The first, number two and number five are almost the same. Is there a need for both of them? Could number five suffice?
They could be, they, yes, they could, you're right. They're pretty, we're pretty much say the same thing, they could be combined.
And secondly, what's the rationale for the division doing the approval rather than the school board?
Um, the school board would approve any overnight trips, and I'm certainly, I mean, there's no problem with, you know, the school board approving. If you want, right now, we do approve them at the beginning of the year, so I mean, there's no problem with continuing to do that. Ms. Willis, could you serve on that committee? Could you answer that?
I honestly don't remember. I was trying to think about the discussion, and I think that's what Ms. Doherty said, that the school board, you know, that we did present, like, the list. I think what that's referring to is like the actual approval when we submit a field trip request form.
When you said submit the form, okay.
Right, like the teachers fill out.
So the board would continue to approve that, and probably look at the policy.
You know, the list of trips. And maybe that needs to be delineated in that.
Well, that's not the way to me it reads, right offhand.
We can certainly take a look at that and try to clarify it.
That, and then, well, one more about the monies. And again, the way I read this, that the monies would be directly turned in to bookkeeping here.
And that's the way it is now, that?
Well, it's my understanding that the school themselves write a check, and it's paused in down here.
I think that's correct. The school will pay.
But I meant the way this, to me, the way this reads, all the money will come down here for Denise to handle.
No, I don't, I don't think that's the intent. I think the intent is to continue to be handled as it is.
Are you referring that that one, the dollar, the dollar per mile, I think is what that's referring to?
Yeah, it says money's paid by the student will be turned in to the bookkeeping at the division level.
Well, it is turned in at the school level, and they receive it to the teacher who's going on the trip, and then it's, it comes to me with a check, in a check.
But if any of you have question or concern, if you look at this, you're certainly welcome to give some call.
There's no reason of changing it.
Okay, next is the remote area medical, Mr. Carter?
As you notice in your packet, there is an inquiry from county administrator about the possibility of using Lee High School and Lee County Career and Technical Center for the two thousand sixteen remote area medical network for, of course, next year. And as he indicated in his letter, they understood that a ball game was scheduled on September the sixteenth at home. I've spoken with Ms. Warner about that, because that would conflict with the dates that they need to building. And she says that they will not be able to change that date, so I just wanted to make sure our board was aware of that, and then I will respond to Mr. Poe and let him know. But Ms. Warner says the contract has already been signed, and I don't think there's any hope for it, she talked to getting that changed.
Okay, summer mission trip housing request for Lee High School, Mr. Carter?
Um, we had received an inquiry and a request from Brad Matheson with the Catholic Diocese of Richmond, inquiring as to whether Lee High School would be interested in hosting a week-long mission trip for the youth of, of their charities. And basically, they was going to focus on home repairs and for folks throughout our county that were in need. The youth would have about two hundred and twenty-five volunteers, and of course, they were looking for a place that would be able to house that many young people, such as cafeteria chairs, programming space, sleeping quarters, and so forth. I've spoken with Ms. Warner about this as well, they're requesting it week, June the seventeenth through the twenty-fifth. And we're not aware of Lee High School or probably any of the other schools hosting a group this large. Of course, we were trying to think if there's a possibility for, you know, any other facility in the county, but probably not with that many folks, with two hundred and twenty-five volunteers. So we just kind of wanted to let the board know that they are asking about it, and Ms. Warner and I have talked about it, but hadn't really, of course, if you have thoughts on it, we'd certainly like to hear those.
Okay, next is Virginia School Board Association, two thousand fifteen annual convention review, Mr. Carter?
Just have a copy of the overview for the two thousand fifteen annual convention in your packet. Basically, it's the agenda.
Okay, you going through the enrollment?
Enrollment, um, for the month of September is three thousand and eighty-five students. And we have good news, that is actually up thirteen students from last month, so we're certainly going in the right direction. We are down sixty students from last school year at this same period. But the good news is we're above budget right now, what we're basing on.
Did you have something, Ms. Lambert?
Yes, I think it's time to move it in. Um, good evening, this is a summary of our financial activity for the month of September. We received revenues totaling three million, two thousand, two hundred seventy-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. As of September thirtieth, we had received twenty point eight five percent of our estimated revenues for the year, and at the same time, we had received twenty point three eight percent. Our expenditures for the month of September totaled one million, eight hundred forty-five thousand, seven hundred forty-two dollars and eighty-five cents. As of September thirtieth, we had used ten point one four percent of our appropriations for the year, and at the same point last year, had used nine point one five percent.
I've got a question, Mr. Carter.
Go ahead.
Uh, and do you have the whole report explaining the line items that you're done?
I think so, yes.
Okay. The category of nurses, food services, and teachers' aides, there was no expenditures in all three of those for September, I'm just curious. Okay, why not?
You are on the.
Expenditures for September.
Uh, line eleven, thirty-one, nurse. We don't pay the nurses until October because they're ten-month people, so October one is their first check. And who else?
Same for food services, substitutes.
Yeah, okay. Well, there is, oh, substitute food service?
Uh, ti, no, food service, it's set.
Food service, only a hundred and eighty-nine.
Well, that's the expenditure due.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Wrong column, and I don't have my ruler.
Here's a piece of paper that I've had to use while.
Yeah. Those are the ten-month employees who will be receiving their first check October one. Any other question?
Same thing for teacher aides.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert. Okay, next is the action agenda items. First is consider approval of the vacant or working compensation panel physicians, Mr. Carter?
Uh, you have for you the workman's comp panel physicians, that is recommended for approval for this year. I'd like to recommend approval.
You have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, on my favor say aye. Next is consider approval of the Head Start fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen amended grant, is that it?
Okay, um, we have a new financial officer in the Head Start program, and we've been doing things the same old way, I guess, here, as Bobby can say, ever since she was there. So it started out that we had to give more explanation, more information, signatures, and such. And the information that was changed was a fully explanation for the non-federal share, an explanation of the home-based program, detailed budget items such as an explanation for other. And our other categories included physicals, fee lisser, criminal background checks, child dental screenings, prevent blindness screenings, and et cetera. So we are asking that you approve the amended, it has been accepted by the Head Start.
Question?
I've got one question that is really not about, about the application. I am curious about the reading readiness participation. I understand that the trainees were pleased with the attendance at Dryden, and I just wondered how it went at some of the other schools.
Uh, there is a schedule, and they, were they at Elton Knob this week?
Yes.
Yes, and there's a schedule throughout, going to each of the elementary schools and the communities for the reading. It's a partnership with the foundation in Kentucky.
I wondered how well the parents came out to attend.
It was very well.
Well.
We had, I think, thirteen. I was in like one room and they flinched around.
I haven't been there, but from the report that Mrs. Trinkle has given, it's been very well-accepted in the community. And working with the parents, it's the first parent engagement program that we have seen to be successful in working with early reading readiness. And, and the books they get, and, and they're really working with the parents.
Right. I make a motion to approve it.
Okay, you have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, on my favor say aye. Pose. Next is the various Head Start documents, Ms. Adams?
You were given in your packet several documents that were to be approved, the health of disabilities, it's really job descriptions, family service, and all of those are safe, they're due, and the curriculum plans. So we ask that you approve these for the policy council.
So moved.
Second? Have a motion, second, on my favor say aye. Pose. Very good.
Thank you.
I was hoping to get you to read every bit of that stuff.
Did you?
That's the reason I was gonna ask you.
Consider approval of the school field trip request, and also overnight field trip, Mr. Carter?
We have three of these for field trip requests, one from Dryden Elementary, and two from the gifted and talented program. The gifted and talented has to request, so the one to go to Abingdon, and the other to go to Kingsport, Tennessee, to the Nutcracker. And I guess we'll do that first, et cetera.
I make a motion, we accept.
What about to New York City?
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, on my favor say aye. And next is consider approval of transfer of track overnight.
Second.
Overnight, I told you to go post.
I'm sorry, I didn't listen well there.
No, you did. Have a request of Thomas Parker High School, their destination is New York City, so that's
for April fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, departure date, it is an overnight trip.
So moved.
Have a second?
Have a motion, second, on my favor say aye. Pose. Okay, next is consider approval of the transfer of track one, the Jasper School property, Mr. Hobbs?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Shadwell, Mr. Carter, members of the board. You have in your package, I think we, I think we put this in this afternoon in your package, just a two-page resolution, excuse me, approving a conveyance circles real estate, followed by a two-page form, quit claim deed of gift. Just very briefly, the school board acquired title to approximately seven point five acres, known as the Jasper Schoolhouse in nineteen fifty-two. Some of that property's been taken over the years. Some of that property's been taken over the years by highway right-of-way projects. A good chunk of the property, platted out by Paris Burke, is shown on plat. I don't know that that's in your materials.
It is.
That's also in your materials. Tracks 2 and 3 were conveyed out by the school board in 1977, leaving a .09 acre tract. It's labeled Track 1. And that's the tract that Mr. Carter referenced earlier that the county board of supervisors has indicated they have plans to dispose of. They've asked the school board to convey title. I don't find that there were ever, ever been any out conveyances of Track 1. And so this drafted deed of gift here is a quitclaim meaning the school board simply would turn over whatever interest it has. It's not making representations about its title. It's my recommendation, the school would use that form to convey, to convey this property back. What is needed to do that is to have a vote to approve the resolution. And that would then authorize Mr. Chadwell to sign the deed on behalf of the school board.
You have a motion to approve the, how much money we give from that place?
I don't believe the county is offering any money.
I make a motion.
Okay, have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Oppose? Okay, thank you, Ms. Lambert.
Thank you.
Next is consider approval of supplemental appropriations request, Ms. Lambert?
In your packet, you have a resolution for a supplemental appropriations request for the school security grant, an amount of $100,000. This does not require any matching funds locally due to our composite index.
I make the motion, take it.
Second? Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Oppose? Thank you, Ms. Lambert. Next is consider approval, pay the bills, Mr. Carter?
I make a motion to pay the bills.
Second?
Give me an ink pen.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Oppose? Okay, next is reports and recommendations of the board, beginning with Mr. Williams.
I got nothing.
Ms. Jessie?
When the school calendar is being developed, would it be possible to place something on our website so that parents could offer some suggestions also?
Mr. Fee can...
Get their input also? And has there been a survey done on the professional development day at the beginning of the year? I heard some very positive comments about that. And I just wondered, again, if maybe a survey to see what sessions may need to be repeated for next year?
We have not actually, you know, completed a survey on the preschool in-service, but we have received very, very positive comments as this was probably important to what we, the feedback that we've received is probably one of the best, and this is from teachers and administrators alike, that they've ever attended. So I think that everyone was very, very pleased with it. But as far as the survey, no.
Is it a potential that we might be losing the food grant if participation doesn't stay high?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I had just kind of heard something about that.
You talking about the in childhood hunger?
Yes, yes.
Not that I'm aware of.
Actually, any or all.
Okay, well, we actually have two, the in childhood hunger that Dryden and Lee High School will be participating in. And right now, we're, our elementary schools are in the community eligibility project. And it is important to keep the participation up. But if we can do that, hopefully, that, you know, that can be moved on to the middle and the high schools. But as far as losing it, no, I don't think so.
Or maybe it's expanding it maybe.
Okay, that could be a problem.
That may not, that may not exist.
That possibly could be a problem.
To expand, to expand to the other schools. And then I'd like to offer two thanks. First, again, to the Masons for the dictionary school students. And then I'd like to extend my thanks for her service here, particularly at Thomas Walker and the guidance department, and that's to Brenda Graham.
Okay. Ms. Tweak?
Yeah, I'd also like to thank the Masonic Logists for their dictionary third-grade students. I think that's a very generous gift and one that's well appreciated. And I'd also like to thank Ms. Willis for showing her presentation. I know your school and the other schools in the county have worked very hard on those. And I know people don't really appreciate all the time that goes into them. But I'd like to thank you all for that. And also, I'd like to have, I mean, a special thanks for the maintenance crews and the bus shops and so forth. And we'll tell you, I'd like to, a couple instances. I was driving down the road the other day, it was about 8 o'clock at night. I passed a coal truck, it was going to the school, it was delivering coal. And I realized it was people from our bus shop. And Sunday, the last two Sundays in a row on my annual trip to the landfill, I glanced over at the bus shop, and I'd be diagnosed if I didn't see David Sampson on our bus on Sunday afternoon, trying to get the bus ready for the route on Monday morning. And I tell you what, those guys come in, and I know they have a lot to do, and I appreciate all the time and effort. And I think they do a fine job, both the maintenance department and the bus shop people. And that's not just to discount all the other, you know, all the employees of the... When you see somebody working on their days off, I think it's, you know, shows they really care about what's going on in the system. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Tweak. Mr. Harper, your resident executive...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to executive post session to consider Personnel Section 2.2-3711A1, Student Discipline Section 2.2-3711A2, Impending and Threatened Litigation Section 2.2-3711A7 of the Code of Virginia to discuss personnel, student discipline, and impending and threatened litigation.
Second? Have a second?
Yes, second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Oppose?